This meeting to order in all rise. Commissioner Lanier has agreed to lead us in prayer today.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you look over our firefighters, our police forces, our sheriff's office. Heavenly Father, we also ask that you, you look over those folks that are struggling a little and, and try to show them the light and the direction to go. Heavenly Father, we all also ask you to watch over our graduates, which I think most of our area schools have graduated this week. And please guide them in a, in a good direction, make them good citizens and that they would be very successful. In your name, we pray.
Mr. Stark, may I send the pledge?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes tonight. The agenda is as presented.
I believe that we accept the agenda as is.
I'll take it. Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, I'll presume it passed unanimously. Brings us to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Oh, we've already approved the agenda, so. Number one, consideration of regular meeting minutes for April sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Number two, consideration of regular meeting budget workshop minutes for May seventh, twenty twenty four. Number three, consideration of treasurer check register for April twenty twenty four. Number four, consideration of finance check registers for April twenty twenty four. Number five, consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty four budget adjustment number fourteen, resolution number twenty-three, twenty-four, sixty-four. Item number six, consideration for award bid number twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, CR three, three fifty Metal Bridge Rail Surface Preparation and Coding to TMI Coatings, Inc. of St. Paul, Minnesota. Number seven, consideration of renewal of proposal number twenty-two, one twelve, comprehensive inmate medical mental health and pharmaceutical care with Well Path of Nashville, Tennessee, and pharmaceutical care and contract pharmacy services of Warrington, Pennsylvania. Number eight, renewal of proposal number twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-one, medical direction for fire and rescue services to EMS DOCs LLC and disaster and emergency medicine LLC of Farmington, New Mexico. Number nine, considerate, we should get more than fourteen on the next meeting.
I think this is the longest.
We should, we should get a bunch.
Some water?
Just for. Number nine, consideration for renewal of bid number twenty-two, one, twenty-five, price agreement for the purchase of asphalt emulsions and associated products to Holly Frontier Refining and Marketing LLC of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Number ten, consideration of renewal of bid number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, price, price agreement for automotive and heavy equipment repairs and repair parts to five vendors, inland group, Largo Tank, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Webb Auto and Ford Zimes, or Zimes Ford. Number eleven, consideration for renewal of bid number twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-seven, price agreement for the purchase of traffic marking paint to All States Coating Company of Glade Water, Texas, and Diamond Vogel, Inc. of Orange City, Iowa. Number twelve, ratification of the annual twenty-twenty-four state homeland security grant program. Number thirteen, consideration of submission of the annual twenty-twenty-four emergency management performance grant. And lastly, but not least, number fourteen, consideration of proclamation declaring May twenty-twenty-four as motorcycle awareness month.
Mr. Chair, I believe that we approve the consent agenda as is.
Having been moved and seconded, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, I'll presume it passed unanimously. Which brings us to our new business agenda. Number one is a presentation on one hundred percent San Juan County, Barb Tedrow, early childhood sector leader, and Kathy Price, the one hundred San Juan County coordinator. Welcome.
I have to lower the microphone. Thank you very much, Chair, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Barb Tedrow, and I wanted to come today because I am proud to be a part of one hundred percent San Juan County. It's an initiative that has been brought forth to our county, and we've been working very hard for the past two years. And there's lots of misconceptions, misnomers, what's this group, what are they doing? And so we've been trying very hard to get out, get the word on what we're doing. And I am very grateful for Commissioner Fortner and for CEO Mike Stark in inviting us to come today. So let me give you a little bit of background as to what one hundred percent New Mexico is. What it is, is there was social workers in Las Cruces by the name of Dom Capello and Dr. Catherine Ortega, and they worked for CYFD. And when they worked in the basement of CYFD, they became very frustrated when the clients and the families and the children that they were working on behalf, CYFD just didn't seem to be doing their job. So they became frustrated when there's a book called Anna Age Eight, and it's based on a child in New Mexico that was killed by her own family members while she was in, while she was being overseen by CYFD and fell through the system. So they became frustrated at their jobs, their lack of commitment, their, their lack of commitment from the higher ups and what could be done. So they left CYFD and they wrote a book, and it's called Anna Age Eight. Well, when they did that, it became known to Senator Souls down in Las Cruces. He contacted them and said, okay, I'm frustrated with CYFD, you're frustrated with CYFD, what could we do? So he allocated them some money on behalf of the legislature to start an institute to look into CYFD to find out what is going on. Why are these children dying while they are in the care of our, our state? We're supposed to be protecting them, and that wasn't happening. So they took the initiative, they started out with a hundred thousand dollar grant, they started one hundred percent New Mexico. And what it's based off of is, you could go to the next slide. What it's based off of is that every family in New Mexico, there are ten items that everybody needs to become successful. There are five items that you need to survive and five items to thrive. And what those are, are what every, it is deemed that every New Mexican needs transportation, behavioral health care, medical and dental care, housing and food. Those are what we need just to survive. And if we want families to thrive in New Mexico, then they need access to parent supports, early childhood learning, community schools, youth mentors, and job training. So that's what this institute does. They started in Las Cruces, and they've grown. Out of thirty-three counties, there are now, there are now twenty-three counties that have joined the initiative with one hundred percent New Mexico, which we started one hundred percent San Juan County. So the next slide. So what we do to, our goal is that we just want to align. The best scenario that I can give you an example of is I'm in early childhood, and I've been in early childhood for twenty-three years. And when I first started, I reported to four different entities. I departed, I reported to CYFD, the Department of Health, Public Safety, and just, and I forget what the fourth one is. Anyway, we have four different entities that, for licensing, who do we go to, who do we report to? Well, when the legislators, when we deemed, we need our own department. If we're going to look at early childhood as education, well, education from K through twelve has PED, higher education. What about early childhood education? So when we started this initiative with Senate Bill twenty-two, we had a lot of kickback. And we had a lot of Republicans especially, they came and said, Barbara, that's just more government. We don't need more government, we need less. When I explained to them, the process is, the problem is, everybody is siloed. And when you're siloed, nobody's holding hands and nothing is getting done because nobody is talking to each other. And I'll tell you, we formed Senate Bill twenty-two passed in twenty twenty, and we farmed our own, own early childhood department. That is what one hundred percent San Juan County is aiming to do. All it's looking to do is, we have got great processes, we've got great people, we've got great initiatives, doing their own work. We don't want to replace anybody, we just want to bring them together. So we want United Way, and we want the county, we want the cities, we want PMS, we want all of these great initiatives to fall under one roof. That's all we want to do is we want to align. So the next slide is, we also want to amplify. So in amplifying, it's just letting everybody know of all of the great programs that are out there. We all know because we're the doers in this community, but the people who need the services the most don't. And that's when it fails, that's when we fail, is when they don't know where to go and what to do. Or if they think, okay, I need food stamps, but they don't know where to go, they don't know how to fill out the applications. We learned something during COVID that a lot of people became dependent, and the state made people dependent on technology. Well, here in San Juan County, not everybody has access to technology. So we need a place where families can go and get the help that they need, how to fill out forms. People don't even know how to get onto a computer, not everybody has a smartphone. So when the governor and the secretaries are sitting, sitting there saying, oh, that's okay, they can do it on their phone. Not everybody has a smartphone. We need to get real. So we need to give access to our families so that they can thrive and survive in San Juan County. So with the next slide. That's okay. Our job is to then advocate, is to advocate on behalf of the families. What do they need, where are the services, and how can they get them? The next slide. We, in San Juan County, part of the initiative with the funding that we received our first go-round was that we had to do a survey. So we went out boots on the ground, we went to the Shiprock Fairs, we went to the chapter houses, we came out to Aztec, we knocked on doors, and we asked families to fill out this survey. So when we got the results, the Anna Age Institute in Las Cruces compiled it for us and put it all together. So these are the, the big results that came, and this is relevant to San Juan County. And when it says, and asking the families, what do you need, these are the real answers. These aren't people in Santa Fe telling us what they think we need, it's our own families telling us in our own words. For the next slide. So our journey began with San Juan County in January of twenty twenty-two. We started, Kathy was fortunate enough, I had been hearing about the institute because I had been going to Santa Fe and listening to Senator Souls. So when we got together, we said, this is what we need to do in our own community. Because everybody looks in Santa Fe to San Juan County. We have got our stuff together, and we are one of the very few counties that knows how to work together. And a perfect example is COVID. When other entities were shutting down and public schools didn't know how to get their schools taken care of, and childcare didn't know how to open, we did it. And we worked together, the, the superintendents and childcare centers worked together. We made the plan, and then the rest of New Mexico followed us. So that's what we're looking to do, is just, just come up with a plan. One of the very first things that we want to do is when you go to the next slide. Oh, this is still talking about funding. So we're funded through twenty, we started in twenty-two, we got more money in twenty-three, and as through twenty-four, we've got more grants in progress, which is the big thing that we're leading to on the next slide, which is looking for, we're looking at building a hub. Our goal, and what the goal of one hundred percent New Mexico thinks that every county needs is a place where one family can go and they can get the answers that they need. They don't need to say, oh, you need to go to the Department of Transportation, then you need to go to the WIC office, then you need to go across town, or they need to come here to the county building thinking that they're going to get answers and going, no, that's actually in Farmington. When you need to see the DA, he's actually in Farmington, he's not here. Where, so we need a place where families can go, a one-stop shop. That is what one hundred percent San Juan County is looking at doing, and we're going to be the first in the state. All we're wanting to do is to, a place where a family can walk through a door with a person working full-time, computer station set up, and they say, I need help with childcare. Okay, let me guide you. I'm going to sit with you, not going to say, there's the computer, go to do it, they're going to sit with you. We're going to have family navigators, and they're going to help the families. Now, navigators don't know it all, they just know where to go to get you the answers. And so we'll have translators on site at these hubs, and we'll have the people to do the jobs and to help them. So when they say, well, I don't know what questions to ask, we'll come over here to the desk and let's call on the phone together, and I will help you, and they'll be there to guide these, these families step by step. So it's not just for families with young children, we're talking about whether it's, I, I, I have a dad who's older now, and I'm looking at having to move him into Farmington. I don't know where to go, I, I've never needed to look at some of those resources. This is a one-stop shop where I could walk through the doors and somebody could help navigate on what services are available to me and my family in San Juan County. So we were fortunate enough that we have received an angel donor to start the one-stop shop with a hundred thousand dollar donation. So that's a, that's a big gift. Our partnership, how this is going to work and why San Juan County is going to be the first one to do this is because we have been fortunate enough to partner with PMS. And two of our other sector leaders are here today, Carrie and Christine from PMS. And what they're going to do is they are going to actually give us a room over at PMS. That's going to be the place for the one-stop shop. And so we're fortunate enough to have that partnership. So where we're looking at going next, one of the other things that we did, which is part of one hundred percent San Juan, one hundred percent New Mexico, is building a family services directory. Now, I know there's directories around and people have different directories, but this is a directory set specifically for the hub so that families go in, they can find, and anybody in San Juan County is welcome to upload. Right now, we've got over three hundred services already listed for the ten services inside of our directory. The next slide. Part of our ongoing mission is, that we said, is to just make people aware of what we're doing. And part of that is working with communities, and I think Kathy can explain a little bit better about the murals and the projects that we do.
Does everyone read an Aztec restaurant? Outside of the building, as you come in from Durango, that big mural was created by Inspire Heart, Christie and Danny Quinson, right here in Aztec. They also did our first mural, it's in Anally by the Ark at Main Street. So when we say one hundred percent, we want to involve the entire community, and that puts these arcs down in these other places. Oh, sure. I thought I used my teacher voice, because Aztec was the first time I worked in public education, way back when, right, Gary? He knows when. Anyways, we want to include everyone, and that includes artists, that includes all cultures, that includes all ages from cradle to grave. And that is our vision, because everybody has something around the corner at some time in their life when they're going to need help. We don't know what it is, they don't know what it is, but if they know and they see on these big billboards, hey, one-stop service center, and we're going to brainstorm the name, it can be called a variety of things, but the mission is going to be the same. Help anybody who walks in the door, no charge, but if they have insurance and they need medical care or dental care, we'll hook them up. If they need information about Medicaid, we'll hook them up, okay, to get the services they need. And the next slide, I think, is our team. Oh, here, again, we get full technical assistance from the Anna Age Eight Institute at MSU. And finally, I think the last slide here is our team right now. And again, I say a fluid team is because we all know we have times in our life that we can volunteer more, work more, and others where we have to stay, take a step back. So right now, we have all ten sectors full of people, and we also have Lynn Spence right here in Aztec who takes care of our resource directory for us. So it's a great team, and we welcome any questions. Again, we are not a five oh one C three, we are not here to replicate or to replace any services. We're just here to align and enhance. And that's pretty much what we have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around all of this, and, and you know, the idea of it sounds great. And I know for us, we did the behavioral health gap analysis, there's the community health assessment, San, San Juan, the partnership has done that for years. We also have our behavioral wellness center, mental wellness center, that we have mentors and people and that can help people with needs, the transportation and food, housing, those have been some of the top needs since we've opened that center. And so, and a lot of this sounds like what PMS already does. I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my mind about how this will not replicate or create another place for somebody to happen to stop, because when you talk about a website, you have a website, people don't have smartphones, but then they don't have transportation. How will they get to, to the navigator as well? I mean, it's a great concept, don't get me wrong. I'm just, there's just a lot of moving parts here, and I agree that things have been siloed in our community because that was one of the things at the Mental Wellness Resource Center that we worked with to get, to have people, when they come in, to be able to send them to certain services. So how is, how is this going to be different than what we've already got going in the county?
Thank you so, Mr. Chair and Ms. Commissioner. So the, the way that it's different is that we are not actually providing the services, one. We're going to lead them and navigate them exactly to where they need to go. Part of the funding that is coming, that, that, the one hundred percent New Mexico and NMSU would like to see is that they understand there needs to be transportation involved in this to and from. So we're looking at getting either coordinating with the Red Apple or getting transportation so that people can call, make appointments and say, okay, can I, I need to be there, and I'm going to probably need to be there for three or four hours so you can help navigate me through the whole system. It's starting to get that ball rolling and aligning, and even helping somebody figure out where they need to go. That's where we're finding the problem is, to begin with, in San Juan County, is that people just don't know where to go. So if we can at least say, we've got a one-stop shop, that's the first place you need to go, then we're going to lead you to where you need to go, and we're going to help you get to the resources of where those are at. So we're, we're, we've been fortunate enough that PMS has stated that they would give us space. So of course, we want to utilize anything that we can. There has been talks because people say, well, everything's always located in Farmington, everything, you know, that's not where it's needed to be. So like, like we're saying now, and kind of like we did with the department, when we formed the department, is the secretary used to always tell people, I'm flying a plane as I'm building it, because nobody's ever done this before. Well, nobody's really built a one-stop-shop hub, and that's just what we're calling it now because we don't exactly have the name. But it's the concept that, you know, the Attorney General was, was just in town, and he will tell you that when it comes to getting help to the services, that when you take a look by the time a child or even a man at the age of thirty, they could have been helped had they been given the resources that they needed, but people just didn't know where to go, and people didn't know what to do to get there once they did, or they were just told, call this number. That's not the goal, and that doesn't work. And I've seen it in what I do in early childhood, is I get parents all the time, they enroll my child, and then once they become comfortable, I'm their second family. Well, they come to me asking me, Barbara, I, I don't have, I can't pay my utilities, I can't pay my rent, my car broke down, where do I go to get a car? I find myself as like this little navigator, and it would be nice for me to be able to say, okay, let's send you here because they can help you with all of that, and they can help you figure it out.
Okay. And then, one other thing, we're going to have satellites, because we know not everybody might be able to get our help for transportation in our van, so we want vans to go out and maybe be staffed with some parent training, maybe a dental clinic, and they go out to where the people are, because this is a huge county. So we want those satellite centers, and then using a common language. For example, at Tris Rios Habitat for Humanity, a lot of people go in there and needing services. So if the navigators can talk to one another and share a common flow chart, oh, you need this? Well, look, this is where you can go and have those resources. It's very doable and it can work. So it's really key to also have those satellites all across the county.
So then, the, will this, will one hundred percent continue on as overseeing all of the different? You said there's twenty-three, so how will that be facilitated? Will that be an ongoing project? Will it be run through the website? Who will run the website, those type things?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Ms. Commissioner Fortner. The way that we are underseen now is we fall under one hundred percent New Mexico. And so NMS is the grantee and oversees all of one hundred percent New Mexico, and then the grantees are each individual county. So we're each given the, the leeway, you can say of like a school board, where they look at us and say, you're local, you need to make your local decisions, but when you need help, we're here. So they have marketing, they have dollars for all the technical assistance, they can help with all that at the top level, but really want it at the local level of what we need.
Thank you.
All sounds great. The only suggestion I would make is to perhaps go check out our Mental Health Wellness Resource Center, just to make sure we're not duplicating a, a bunch of, of different things. Because a lot of what you're talking about, I, I think they do, so I just, just to make sure we're all on the same page and, and not duplicating. All right.
And thank you for allowing me to speak for a moment. You're absolutely right.
Identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Christine Marito with PMS. And you're absolutely right, the, the mental health, the mental wellness resource center does an amazing job, and we already partner with them. And in fact, we've included them in the planning from the beginning, they are our navigators, that's what they do. And there is no one in the county that does peer support services better than they do. So they are absolutely a key part of this plan. And then the question came up about transportation, the building that PMS is looking at is our behavioral health building, there is a Red Apple stop right there, so.
Very well, thank you. Any other questions?
I think there's an initiative going on right now about community school concepts. And I think what you're doing is a part of it, because educators would always say, nobody knows what to do, I don't know what to tell the parents, and yet they need. Above all, those educators are the ones who see the stress and the needs that families are going through. So I, I can see that, how this is meshing together with community schools.
And, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Tordertina. If you look at one of the ten sectors, it is community schools. And we do have, Aaron from FMS is our sector leader for community schools. Farmington right now does. for community schools. Um, Farmington right now does have two community schools, um, within the school system. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Lanier.
Um, I have one question. Just to clarify, what, what is the role PMS will have in this? Other than, I understand you're going to have a room that you can meet. I love the navigation thing. You know, me being the old guy that can't navigate his own phone, I, I love the idea of that and, and helping people through. But I'm just curious on what PMS, what their real role would be.
So I want to clarify, it's not one room, it's several rooms. So we have some empty space in our behavioral health building. So, uh, we'd like to potentially move the navigators into that building, give them space of their own, as well as having offices available for like Veterans Affairs, Housing, other types of programs, so that several programs can actually be in that space. Currently, PMS does seven out of the 10 sectors, so we just felt like it fit with our mission. Um, so we're looking at providing that housing, some coordination, um, and then working with outside agencies.
Right.
I just have one more question, probably for Barb. Um, so the website, that's one thing that I've experienced, having provided services here in our community, is a lot of times, things are forgotten, and things aren't in operation any longer, and it's something needs to be dynamic and not static. So would the website be managed by 100% community? Or how would that, how's that work?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Ms. Commissioner, yes. And that's the luxury of being under the entity of 100% New Mexico, is they do have the funds and a full-time assistant person to help keep the website fluid and navigating at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Great. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to a presentation on the City of Bloomfield, a proposed annexation. George Duncan, Bloomfield City Manager, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. First. I don't know that you need all this, but I'll provide it anyway, because that's what we do.
I need one more piece of paper. This is in the packet, too, just so you know.
Yeah, it is, yeah. Yes, all the information you've got's in their packet.
I love that. Mr. Chair, good afternoon. And thank you for allowing me the opportunity to prize a commission. It's the City of Bloomfield's Intanto Annex 1.78 acres of land, which currently lies outside the city limits. The property currently is split with 0.66 acres within the city limits and 1.78 acres outside the city limits. Uh, please note that Danny Fahad, the managing member of MM150 LLC, owner of said property, contacted us, they came to us, requesting the annexation. This particular property in, uh, was at the intersection of South Bloomfield Boulevard and South 550, uh, and Industrial Boulevard, or County Road 4980. Bloomfield Zoning Commission has heard the, the request passed unanimously onto the Bloomfield City Council, which on May 13th, the City Council approved this, uh, annexation request by 550 LLC. And we stand here answering any questions we folks may have.
Has Mr. Fahad indicated any, uh, projected anticipation of what he's going to do with the property, or the reason other than just it's half in, half out?
Well, I'm not, I mean, it's a retail space. I don't know that they have indicated, I have been gone, I've been on vacation for about a week or so. I'm not sure what that was going to be. I'd like to think it's an REI. Uh, but that just comes out, it got me out. I suspect it's probably Family Dollar.
Yay. Any other questions, comments? This was just presentation only.
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I might add that it's just presentation only, as I think you're aware of, of previous annexation requests that come before the county from the municipalities. They have the right by state law to, to only present this item to you and take any feedback you may have for them. Um, so if you had any specific feedback, this would be the time to do it.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right, brings us to item number three, which is consideration for application for variance from San Juan County Cannabis Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for High River Cannabis LLC, 22 Road, 2237 in Aztec. Uh, welcome, Michelle Truvitalen.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, High River Cannabis LLC submitted a variance petition application to the Community Development Department on March 21st, 2024. Seeking a variance from Section 3A of Ordinance Number 120, the minimum separation distance from a residence requirement. High River Cannabis wishes to start a two-acre outdoor cannabis grow operation with a fenced area located at 22 Road, 2237 in Aztec. The proposed grow operation is within 300 foot of one residence, measuring 147 feet from the proposed fence. Applicant is seeking a variance to the, to the life of the business at this location.
Oh. I recognize property now, sorry.
It's Eagles Bend subdivision, if, if.
You know it well.
A public hearing was held before the hearing Officer Douglas St. Eccles on April 22nd, 2024. The requesting variance was not opposed at the hearing by the resident within 300 feet of the proposed grow operation. A second neighbor, whose residence was originally within the 300 feet, until the petitioner revised his plan by moving the proposed fence more than 300 feet away from this residence. So in other words, originally, there were two residences, seeing that the petitioner willingly moved his fence so that the second residence, which was outside of the 300 foot and away from it, no longer requiring a variance from that residence. Appeared at the hearing and expressed concerns about the potential smell. No negative comments were received by Community Development Department. Hearing Officer Eccles submitted written findings and conclusions on, and recommends the request for variance be granted.
And, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I usually read a statement, if, if you don't mind. Um, every time the commission considers an application for variance from the Cannabis Regulation Ordinance, I like to make the following statement. The statement is directed more to the public to explain the process the commission will go through in considering the variance. When the commission considers this item, they will be asking few, if any, questions to the applicant. Reason for this is that the hearing on this issue has already been conducted by a hearing officer, in this case, on April 22nd. If the commission were to ask a lot of questions and to reconduct parts of the hearing tonight at this meeting, it would violate the due process rights of parties who did not have noticed that a new hearing would be conducted. Instead, the commission will be relying on the evidence gathered by the hearing officer at the cannabis variance hearing to make their decision. They've also been able to consider comments that they have individually received from constituents. The hearing officer has recommended that this variance be approved. The commission can accept or modify the hearing officer's recommendations, or it can deny the variance. And so if the, if the commission does deny the variance, it, um, it should, uh, you know, state their reasons for doing so. Thank you.
Are there any, any questions that get into what Mr. Chairman are talking about?
Well, sorry for my outburst.
It's, uh, to be expected.
But I grew up farming that piece of property, and I recognized the number, and I kept looking, where's our property? It was it. So that's all I had. Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
The, the question about the smell, is, is that, has that been addressed?
Go, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Totatini, uh, yes, it was addressed in the hearing. The applicant and the, uh, person who had the questions about the smell went back and forth on the issue on solutions, and the applicant was more than happy to communicate with the individual. If there should become a problem, they will initiate a Mr. type system, any of the other systems that would negate smell.
All right. Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the variance, Regulation Ordinance Number 120 for High River Cannabis LLC, 22, 2237.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us to item number four, a consideration of proposed fiscal year 2025 interim budget. Uh, Mr. Travis Cisco.
Chairman, Commissioners, I'm happy to stand here with a balanced fiscal year 25 interim budget. The fiscal year 25 interim budget is due to Department of Finance and Administration, DFA, by June 1st, 2024 via electric submission into their local government budget management system. The budget documents will be sent to DFA after approval during the May 21st, 2024 Commission Meeting. DFA will approve the interim budget by July 1st, 2024, in which the interim budget will become a legal binding document until the final budget is approved. The final budget is due to DFA by July 31st, 2024. After approval of the interim budget, additional commission changes can be addressed in the final budget, which we presented for approval in July. The final approval from DFA will be received by September 6th, 2024, in which the final budget will be the official budget of record for the county and a legal binding document. Budget adjustments can subsequently be made as operational demands changes throughout fiscal year. Uh, then I'd also like to go over a few highlights from, uh, some changes that were done between the budget workshop and, uh, meeting today. Uh, GRT revenues, uh, were reevaluated, and it was determined that an increase of 1.28% to the 3.9% that was already in the budget workshop budget was a reasonable increase as recurring revenues due to trends that are being recognized through the actual fiscal 24 GRT revenues received to date. The impact of the budget is an increase of $615,228. A request from the Commissioners to increase outside agency funding for San Juan County Museum Association to the, fund, to fund the original fiscal year 25 request of $15,000 was made, and that impact was an increase of $5,000. And then during, during the budget workshop, the market study from Valiant and a 1% COLA were presented to the Commissioner for consideration to include in the fiscal year 25 budget cycle. Uh, the commission recommended to add both the market study and COLA to the fiscal 25 interim budget, and certified employees for sheriff's office are also budgeted to receive an additional 3% wage adjustment. The overall impact to the budget is an increase of $1,524,787. And, uh, stand for any questions?
Are there any questions?
Um, just, I guess, um, on the money that goes to the senior centers on the Navajo Nation, um, I, I, I'm glad that we're going to just stick by the Navajo Nation, what they told us, is only the certified chapters get the money. I feel bad about the non-certified, but that's for the nation to take care of that. So, just a comment on that.
And, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Totatini, to your point, we just have the eight certified chapters. A senior center is budgeted at 5,000 each.
Mr. Chairman, I, I could, I, I'd like to echo Commissioner Totatini's comments on that.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions?
I just, the Red Apple Transit, I like that we increased that. Um, that was one of the things we discussed the other day, and I'm glad to see that one go up. I, I think it's getting used more than, than it has in the past, too. Not only increasing costs, but, but I feel like it gets used a lot more. And maybe that's just because I'm in the right places.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Lanier, uh, that is accurate. Uh, they've seen ridership increase. Uh, and then, of course, as a result, costs have increased. And so that was passed on to us by the City of Farmington for the stops that we have in the county, which I believe is 11 stops. And so they, um, proportionately put together a spreadsheet, uh, for us and the other cities, uh, Bloomfield and Aztec, that, that also have stops and, and have increased, or passed along the increased costs to each of the entities. So that, that is, that is accurate.
And if you haven't rode, rode one yet, you should try it out. They're, they keep them very well maintained, they're very clean. It's, it's not like the old New York buses.
Describe the old.
Fine, yes, just throw that out there, New York.
Mr. Chair, I was pleased to see that, uh, we increased, uh, for the San Juan County Museum, because the initiative right now is with terrorism, there's the trailer of the ancients, and, uh, salmon rooms will probably be a part of that. So I'm glad that that was added.
And for my sake, because I wasn't at the workshop, this, this budget includes all of the gap analysis as far as, uh, wage gaps and rectifying all of that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's correct. We had a very robust meeting, I think it went over two hours. Um, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you missed out on it. Uh, but we did present, uh, the market study, uh, as well as the, the COLA and all that's included within the request before you.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, I would move that we, we pass the proposed FY 2025 interim budget.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any, I presume it passed unanimously.
Good job.
And we need to work on, uh, getting Mr. Cisco some walk-up music for the next time he presents. I, I, I think, I think he deserves some walk-up music, so.
He is a Minnesota Vikings fan.
All right, that brings us to our report from our county manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. Uh, we've got a couple of staff that I know want to give some updates. Uh, I just have a couple for you. Uh, one, it's time to get the golden shovels out. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna break ground on the Tota Water and Wastewater Subdivision Improvement Project, uh, June 3rd at 3 o'clock. So we'll make sure that's on your calendars and, and that you can attend.
We're going to make sure to keep one of those golden shovels in the back of Commissioner Lanier's, uh, truck, so he can, each access line, he can help dig those out as well.
Yes, we actually, I'm sure TRC Construction could, uh, put him to work. They've got a lot of, a lot of lines to dig. Uh, and then, uh, we also are in the process of, of working on submission of a Chrissy grant, which is a Consolidated Rail and Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Grant application. Uh, we're bringing it to you tonight, because the deadline is, is May 28th. This is the one we're working on in conjunction with the Navajo Nation and our partners, uh, here locally on the Four Corners Freight Rail Project. Uh, this grant would allow for some preliminary engineering work, NEPA study work, uh, that would be needed to facilitate the next, uh, stage of the project. And so we're working on that submission. Uh, our understanding, it's a three- to four-month evaluation process, and, um, we've received, uh, letters of support from NMDOT, on the Navajo Nation, from President Nygren. Uh, our congressional delegation's also, uh, working on a letter of support, too. I was looking for Mr. Dumont, who was in the room earlier, because he's helping put that together for us as well. So I want you to know that that's, the application will, will be going in here soon. Uh, and given the timeline on, on actually having something to, to present to you, as you know, by our, by right of our grant policy, we bring anything to you that's over $100,000, or has any form of a match. And given the timeline on actually having something to present to you, as you know, by right of our grant policy, we bring anything to you that's over $100,000 or has any form of a match. This match would be required, or would be, not required, but would be provided by NMDOT and the Navajo Nation. But since the amount that we'd be requesting is over $100,000, we would bring that back to you at the next meeting on June 11th for your ratification of that agreement. But I think this was expected by all of you that have been informed and updated on the project as we've moved forward with it. And so, and that also does bring to light that, just a reminder, we only have one meeting in June. It's June 11th. We moved that back in January to accommodate the canvassing of the primary election. So, June 11th at 4 o'clock, and we'll probably have a similar consent agenda because we're at the end of the fiscal year, Mr. Chair. And we have lots of bids and proposals to renew, so we'll see if we can hit your mark of 14 again.
Succeed.
But I can stand for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Stark?
I just have one. Did you do a road cleanup?
We did, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Lanier. May 9th, highway cleanup with Public Works, Team Public Works and NMDOT cleaned up the stretch of 516 between Aztec and Farmington. And then it ventured down after that was completed and covered portions of 64. And we also liked the order by which it happened this time. We were able to do a cleanup on 516. And then a couple of days later, NMDOT came by and mowed the highway corridor. Unfortunately, in past years, they mowed first and then we were picking up confetti. So, I'm glad we got the order right this time, and we certainly appreciate their efforts. It was, you know, something we're committed to as one of our strategic initiatives and making us shine and cleaning up San Juan County. And the goal is to have two of those events per year with NMDOT to help assist them in cleaning up the highway rightaways. Because those are our gateway entrances into our community, and it's really important that we look good, and not just to our locals, but those that are coming to visit us from out of town. So, yeah, thank you for asking about that.
It didn't go unnoticed. I had a lot of comments.
Oh, that's good. Well, kudos to Mr. Perel and his team that assisted with that. And Mr. Sevager, I think, was out in the morning too. I wasn't able to attend this one, but who else? Mr. Webb and some of the staff at the ADC, as well as our detainee population that was able to assist. Yeah, it was a great cleanup, and we got a lot of good things done. So, thank you. Oh, parks and facilities as well, that's right. Along with the NMDOT staff. Appreciate that.
Any other elected officials, department heads?
Talk each other over, coming up.
Mr. Chair, Commission, and Mike, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for the budget approval. This is going to be huge news for 90% of my staff. I think we're all eligible for an increase, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Before you leave, I wanted, I wanted to thank you for going to the Masada Music Festival. It was good to see individuals from San Juan County. So, thank you for being there.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
No wrestling, no wrestling.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Webb's always a tough act to follow, so I'll try to make it worth your while. But wanted to give the Commission a bit of good news that we recently received. As the Commission may remember, earlier this spring, we submitted funding for a new fire truck, and that was through the 2025 Community Project Funding. And that was sponsored by Representative Ledger Fernandez. We were notified on Friday that San Juan County and San Juan County Fire and Rescue was awarded funding for a new fire truck, which is outstanding news. That fire truck will serve the, kind of the southeastern part of our county, Blanco, Navajo Dam, several of the smaller chapter houses south of Bloomfield. Fire truck right now is, as you all know, running close to $1 million. So, that being funded by Representative Fernandez is a huge relief for us. So, wanted to pass that good news on to the Commission. Those appropriations won't be available till later this fall, but she's looking forward to bringing us a big check. So, that's all I had. I stand for any questions?
How did the coal trailer fire turn out last night?
Outstanding job. The folks did a great job. The rear brakes locked up on the coal trailer. So, it was a bulk trailer, so there's dividers in that trailer. So, just the rear compartment caught a fire, so the guys had a good knock on it. I think the mine was there for most of the day offloading the rest of the coal, but a good, good quick stop before it got into the rest of the trailer. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. Ooh, we're going to get a branch update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Wanted to give you all an update on a project information meeting that was held two weeks ago this Thursday regarding the Lower Animus Valley Recreation Trail Alternatives Analysis and Master Plan. The meeting was covered in substance, I think, quite well by both the Farmington Daily Times and the Tri-City Record. But the meeting gave us an opportunity to explain to folks what the project is, what the project isn't, and answer some of the questions they might have. You might recall when we awarded the Engineering Services Agreement for the contract, what we were considering at the time was exclusively a rail connection between City Farmington and the City of Aztec. Through the scoping of the project, we identified some gaps in that railroad right-of-way that were sold by the county, I think in 1977. So, the Alternatives Analysis has proceeded in evaluating four potential corridors for connection between Farmington and Aztec, all of which using existing public right-of-way. Those corridors being the Mexico 516, Old Aztec Highway, still portions of the old railroad, and South Side River Road or County Road 3,000. So, the project is still very much in the Alternatives Analysis phase. The public information meeting was a component of any good planning process, where we're accepting public comments and incorporating those comments into our plan and an associated executive summary. We will continue to receive those comments through June 1st. We have established a website for the project. It's available from the sjcounty.net homepage. And we are accepting comments via email at lavrt@sjcounty.net. If you should encounter any folks that have something to say, please do impurge them to submit their comments via that email address. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. But I will say that once the Alternatives Analysis is complete, we will be bringing that to you for your final review and consideration. So, again, project's still in the works. I think some folks may have thought, you know, bulldozers were ready to leave the garage. That's certainly not the case. This is not a construction project at this point in time. It is very much a planning process. So, that's all I have to say.
Any? Yes, sir. I know I'm talking a lot today, don't I? I just want to give kudos to you and Stephen for going on the radio, or on the.
KSG.
Yeah, KSG. And you guys did a great job. There was a lot of misinformation out there. We were all at the meeting. You know, Mr. Stark, all of you, we appreciate you hosting that meeting, because it is very important that those folks get to be heard, and that's what that is for. And some of them are a little louder than others, but I think we heard some very good comments on both sides. And, but I really appreciate you guys taking the time and going out and interviewing, so that people could kind of be at ease that they weren't just, the bulldozers weren't just leaving the garage and ready to run through their barn or something like that. So, kudos to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads or elected officials?
Mr. Chair, San Juan County Museum Executive Director Larry Baker, he's going to be retiring after 31 years. And he received a lifetime achievement award in Santa Fe on May 17th. And this is with his archaeology group. So, and his retirement celebration will be on June 8th. Around about noon to 4:00, I think. At the Salmon Rooms.
All right, I just wanted to announce the healing fields. San Juan County Rotary is going to be setting this up. We go and mark the fields at the Boys and Girls Club on Thursday evening, and we get all the flags posted, along with dog tags to honor our fallen veterans. And then, people can walk through the flags all during the weekend to commemorate the Memorial Day. A lot of families like walking through these flags. And then on Monday at 6 o'clock, we're going to have a closing ceremony and have a veteran speak, as well as reading of the names of all the fallen veterans in our area. So, I'd just like for you to experience this if you have the opportunity, and I appreciate my fellow Commissioners for their support. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. There was a presentation that was done on sexual trafficking, and the workshop was done at the Fire Operations Center. And the information that was given was, I think whoever attended that made everybody aware. There was a lot of behavioral health people that were present and listened in. There's also another one that's going to be done the 29th at the Civic Center next week. So, a lot more speakers will be there. So, I think you have to register, I'm not sure, to be there. So, to hear all these. I think they have about six speakers.
Anyone else? All right, that brings us to comments input from the general public. Comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, and to subjects the Commission has not previously discussed, or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. Anybody has anything they'd like to say? Come on up. Just make sure that you identify yourself for the clerk, so that she can have our records reflect.
This is high enough for me, I guess. I'm Joseph Pope of Farmington. And thank you, Commissioners, for hearing us today. I'm here with my good friend, Dr. Bob Leamer. And Bob Leamer and I have spent some time raising money for Riverfest. I'm the newest member of the Foundation Board. And as we went around to the businesses in Farmington and indeed all over the county, we represented ourselves as a paradox. I'm sorry. And anyway, somebody thought that was cute. Thanks for letting me speak today. On behalf of the Riverreach Foundation and Riverfest Directors, I would like to thank the county manager and the Commissioners for the continued support of the Riverfest event, the first of which was held in 1987. It has become one of the largest events in the county, and perhaps at least the largest event in the city of Farmington. We've found that it's not the biggest thing, that's right, in the county. Indeed, it is a signature event. Since 1987, the Foundation has continued to promote preservation of our riverfront trails and wildlife venues. This was particularly demonstrated during the COVID-19 pandemic. The trails are safe and welcoming, and along with the three rivers that run through San Juan County, they are a great asset to the area. And now, we are going to be supportive of the idea of extending these trails across the county. Our Foundation celebrates the reception of the grant recently awarded to San Juan County. As you know, the grant comes from Outdoor Recreation Division and the New Mexico Environment Division and Economic Development Department. It's designated for the Lower Animus Valley Recreation Trail. And of course, we do stand in support of this section of trail. I know there's lots to work out to get anywhere near voting on it. Anyway, I think that our rivers are one of our greatest resources in this county. As you probably know, 66% of all the surface water that flows in the state flows through this corner of the state. Always sound that remarkable. And most people don't realize what a beautiful resource it is. And indeed, I walk most days at Bird Park with my doggy and my binoculars. Anyway, we think the existing trails are really virtually a world-class human resource for our citizens. It promotes economic development, tourism, human well-being, environmental health, community spirit, and many other benefits. The natural beauty of these trails, along with other great community resources, are essential to our ability to attract residents, especially professionals, retired people, and tourists. As a physician, practicing many years in San Juan County, I know how hard it can be to recruit and retain professional talent in our corner of the state. Anyway, if I may, please promote Riverfest here, shamelessly. As you know, it's going to happen this weekend, the 24th, 25th, and 26th. We have some flyers we would share with you, and I'd even accept any more sponsorships. Have the appropriate letters to share with you if you need. As you know, Riverfest is a public, family-friendly, annual event organized by the Riverreach Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Admission and parking are free. Our Riverreach Foundation mission is to protect, promote, and enhance our riverine corridors. And the Riverfest event mission is to bring people together with the river. Our vision is for natural, healthy habitat for all life along the riverine corridor. And as you know, the events you might expect to find there are a 10K race, a wiener dog race, duck race, rafting, some for fun and some for competition. Disc golf, yoga, children's activity, and car shows. And of course, lots of music. Entertainment will include live music, Apache crown dancers, One Nation Core dancers, and a recycled fashion show. Artisan craft vendors, food vendors, beer and wine gardens, non-food vendors. All three, Animus, Berg, and Boyd Parks will be involved. And that's all I have to say to you. Thank you very much for giving me the minute.
Thank you.
Hope it was great events.
Thank you. Dr. Leamer, welcome.
My name is Bob Leamer. This is my wife, Gloria. And we're going to talk about the upcoming events with the Lower Animus Valley Trail grant that you received. And because of my stomach problems, I'll start coughing if I talk too long, so I'm going to ask Gloria to read this script for me.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Commission. I'm Gloria Leamer, board member of the Riverreach Foundation and longtime, lifelong San Juan County resident. These are Bob's words. The grant received for the Lower Animus Valley Trail is to provide a first step in connecting Aztec and Farmington by a proposed bicycle walking trail. The proposal by the architectural firm shows how the two cities and county can potentially make this happen. The proposed trail would create both health and economic benefits to our citizens and visitors. In 1971, several of the land parcels along the Denver and Rio Grande Railroad right-of-ways were sold by the county. Most of the right-of-way exists and can be used as a backbone for trail development. Working with privately owned parcels can be challenging, but can be beneficial to both landowners in the county and community at large. To have a major bicycle hiking trail proximal to the owner's properties will enhance their land values as it has adjacent property owners along the Animus River Trail in Farmington. Alternative routes can be used to make a contiguous connection as needed. Many people in the outlying areas are against the proposed bicycle hiking trail. However, the vast majority of county citizens are favorable to the project. The Riverreach Foundation is in support of this project. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and Councillors. My name is Linda Corwin, and I just wanted to bring a little bit of good news tonight. That is, our New Mexico's 2022 election was ranked the most well-run in the country by the Massachusetts Institute of Technology's election data and science labs. and Science Lab's Elections Performance Index. This index measures metrics ranging from voter wait times and turnout to voter registration rates and election audits. So we're very proud of that. Our Secretary of State, Maggie Toulouse Oliver, said the professional election administrators who keep the polls open and the votes counted and the engine of democracy running in New Mexico are exemplary. And it's honor to see this work recognized on the national stage. And of course, we have to congratulate our county clerk, Tony Shelby. I know she's running a poll workers class. I attended one this morning, so I'm ready to go to work. And we should all be proud of what she does for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments input from the general public? Not seeing anybody running up and having exhausted the agenda, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.